I'm going to call the budget meeting to order and Sheriff Leszbi will be with us. Hold on one second too. The Sher- Sheriff, are you gonna start on your budget? Okay Sheriff.
Page six.
Page six with Sheriff.
Can you say that again?
Okay. It is, I'm gonna call the budget meeting to order for August 20th. And our first presenter is, our first apartment is Sheriff Leszbi.
Could I just put a word in first? I'd like to thank Beth and her girls for their organization of this book. Agenda just went like clockwork yesterday. I appreciate it and I know nobody, everybody else knows, but yes I feel it down.
Thank you, my new girl and I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for my first clerk. I did all the input, I copied. This is the book I need and so she did all the tabs. I mean I printed the, you know, she did, we worked together and if not, I would not have these books done. Because of the electricity being out last week and everything else, so.
You did a good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I'll piggyback on Doc's comment. I think they have a lot of unsung heroes in the courthouse. And as you know, the end of last year, beginning of this year before the COVID, I know one of the things that we were all talking about was trying to get a handle of that little more consistent and common sense handle on the pay structure. Obviously with all that going on, we did not have that opportunity. I will reiterate that. At some point.
Very good. That's to you sir.
All right, well, first of all, I'll start right out much like what was just being brought up, but I want to thank the council for what you've done for the sheriff's office in our jail the last couple of years and longer. The funding's been more than, in my opinion graciously appreciated. And I think it's definitely helped in the aspect of being able to keep personnel on board. Particularly, I guess I speak to some of the raises that were involved in the last couple of years. So it's been very much appreciated, I know. And so as I continually hear throughout the county, I think we've got a great group going right now in the sheriff's office. You know, I somewhat in a humorous way comment that I kind of feel like an old bull and I've got a bunch of young bulls around me and they're very energetic and very proactive and they go out and protect the community. So I appreciate the funding that this group provides so that we can continue to serve our community. I was also gonna add that this is somewhat bittersweet for me in a way that this is, I'll have one more of these to present. My last term, or last year is 22, so we aren't talking about 21 already. So it's kind of getting toward the end here. But in general, I left my notes down in the truck and I know this was last minute, but if there's anything in particular I guess that jumps out at you. I did, I guess what I wanted to comment on, I believe going back through some of my numbers, particularly the position I was looking into for a part-time courthouse special deputy is what I was booked to put that title at, special deputy for courthouse security. I know I had submitted fifteen thousand five dollars. I, once I went back through my own numbers, I miscalculated that. And I guess I would respectfully request to amend that number at twenty thousand or up at two twenty thousand rather than fifteen thousand five. That puts the hourly rate, as I calculated, at just a little bit over ten dollars an hour. My concern is having too low of an hourly rate, we may not be able to attract anyone to apply for that position. Granted, we have a few retired law enforcement officers in our community that may show an interest that this position potentially supplement their retirement. But I just, once I went back through and did my math again, I grossly underrated the hourly rate and so I would like to amend that to twenty thousand rather than fifteen five.
When would you use those deputies?
It would, it only would be at this point, I would, just starting right out of the gate Paul, I would anticipate we would actually only advertise for one position at that rate. And I foresee that it would just simply be thirty-six hours a week at the same time the courthouse is open. And so again, that's why, I guess, part of the benefit I've always felt, particularly when I approached this group and re-implementing and for the whole year fact, is making those positions part-time, so therefore we don't have, the county doesn't have the added expense of benefits. And so if we can bring somebody on part-time, again, we save the taxpayers of the community you know, some extra dollars by making that position part-time. But to answer your question, I'm just looking at thirty-six hours a week, seventy-two hours in a pay period and only during the term or the time that the courthouse is open, the courts are actually.
I noticed office supplies looks like a fivefold increase. What's the anticipation there? Equipment?
Equipment, not necessarily, obviously copiers are out of the picture at this stage. It's equipment from the aspect of, you know, the paper. I mean, you know, as we well know, costs are somewhat up all the way around, so. You know, so yeah, I'll look at equipment and various things there.
Why did you advertise vehicles out of your budget this year? Or advertising is the wrong word, well, actually it's right.
Why were they displayed there?
Yeah.
He does it every year. He do it every year and then.
I know that it comes from Cubecap.
In case it doesn't come from Cubecap. And I'm not saying that anyway, I'm just saying it's to cover.
I just put a lot of.
Just to cover if the commissioners don't put it in. That's what I was told one time, is he puts it in in case the commissioners don't take it out.
That's a recurring issue though. So do we mark that out or not?
So.
We'll just decide one where the other, where it's coming from.
Oh, I see.
On the retirement?
Yes.
So last year we did the accelerated payment.
That was the recommended amount.
Last year I thought, last year we did the high end amount.
No, that was the recommended.
So it's gone up pretty dramatically in the last, I mean it was steady, steady, steady. Then the last two years it's had pretty incremental jumps. Do you have an idea what that's gonna look like in the future?
Well.
Or, I mean, what are they telling you?
Yeah, the simple answer off that's been offered to me is obviously we have deputies such as myself that are quickly approaching that retirement level. And so it's, if you will, I'm planning for the future. Now, one thing I can offer this group, and it's always, always open, I could have Sam Brown with the Creed King come in and explain if need be, why, because he gets into more of the details.
I would, I mean, I would like to, just, I mean, I mean, we added a deputy, so that's, you know, obviously gonna be more expected, there's more there. But just in terms of long-term planning, this is five percent up year-over-year. And I think it was more than that last year. So if that's a, you know, this is a trend, we just need to be prepared.
Trip it down. I always, just for what it's worth, there's the recommended amount is what I always submit year after year. And so that, that amount reflected there is the recommended amount.
Yeah, I saw that on the, yeah, for One America.
Yeah, yeah.
Other than that, I think everything's good. Did you get your new vehicle yet?
Just.
Durango's gonna work out better than the Chevy Malibu maintenance machines?
So far they seem to be.
Good.
Yeah.
Those are fun checks, right? Everybody loves to tax dollars, go fix some cars that won't work great.
I'm just happy to be getting out of, it's not a comment against GM, but I think the last group, as some of you may have heard, we mentioned, the last group of the talent we had, I think it was a huge group of women's. So we're, we have two still in the fleet that two of our youngest deputies have and, you know, so far they're doing well, so, but obviously I'm looking to face those out.
Appreciate four-wheel driving in the winter.
Yes. Winter and then somewhat of a remote area, even in the summer.
Yeah. All right, skip ahead to the jail, it's twenty-four. I mean, the big driver for this one's always outsourcing event mates.
Right.
Last, this year we transferred out of that into building and structures and computer repair. Is there any way to know where we're really at? I know, I mean, I know population's down right now.
Right.
Just looking at the 2021 and.
Yeah. I, obviously I'm not psyched, but you know, once this virus, whatever happens to them, courts, and I think many of us would agree, particularly in our world, that the, if you will, the floodgates are really gonna open. Like you know, we have a backlog through the information office for individuals that have been sentenced by the courts to basically certain weekends, backlog there because I've been hesitant to bring them to the facility due to the viral situation. So I honestly, it's a, it's a roll of the dice, I suppose we could say. I am thankful speaking to the aspect of, you know, having to transfer from that fund because as we well know, we have some unexpected plumbing issues within our facility that were high dollar, I mean, one of them was ten thousand dollars alone. So, you know, the, and I'm not getting held by its water source, but that, that line scale is catching up with the plumbing in the county jail. And so that is some of the reasons why we had basically three water heaters go out relatively close to one. And one of them was an eighty gallon unit. So that was quite costly. There was water lines associated with that feeding into that water heater that had to be replaced as well. So, so I am thankful for that, thank being able to transfer from that. Granted, I know that money can set aside purposes and pay the county jails to hold it or out of county, but, you know, I know I had asked for the two hundred thousand for twenty-one, but I honestly can't put a specific number on without knowing what's gonna, how much virus is gonna end up. Right now for what's worth, we have four, we only have four outsourced in White County. So our number should straighten a little on that end as well.
I mean, in-house we have.
In-house we have twenty-three.
You have a pretty significant increase in furniture, computers and printers. Is there anything specific there?
As, as may be expected, we obviously repair, handle or replace laptops and other IT-type equipment on an annual basis and rotate in either updated or new equipment in that aspect. So.
Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick, can somebody remind me of the holiday pay situation? Does that, I know there was a change driven by the personnel committee a year or so ago before they disbanded, in the way that we pay, you know, we're paying based on a twenty-four hour shift versus a eight or twelve hour shift. Right, Doug, I think you talked about this last year. But that was previous to 2020, I thought. So what, what's that line there?
Addressing the holiday thing?
Yeah, yeah. And that, that was an error pointed out to me actually this year, but we weren't able to catch it in time for a bunch of times. Obviously whenever, policy is incorrect if I'm wrong here, Beth, that obviously a county employee, that if they take a certain holiday and if you don't save that, they have sixty days under county policy to use that holiday. They can also request basically straight time pay for that holiday if they're not going to use it or plan to use it. So this funding would be in anticipation of that. If they're going to not see to use that specific holiday, then they're receiving that straight time pay. So that's what that budget is allowed.
So that's not a new policy though. Did we miss it in 2020 or did it come out a different line?
No, I, I did.
I did not submit that and that's what I'm saying. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to.
It was included, they were using their holiday pay differently than, than what was required. So we, we were fixing that.
Right, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Animal control on twenty-six.
On average, it's twenty-five a week.
Just, just the one animal.
Yes.
Are you asking for an increase or an increased number of hours on, I mean, an hourly increase or an increased number of hours?
Hourly increase.
Okay. What did you calculate that at? I mean. Oh, that's hard. I mean, let me ask you an easier question. Is, what's, how many hours is she supposed to work?
Fifty is what's, she's twenty-five hours.
Twenty-five hours.
Fifty in a pay period.
I can back it up.
Yeah.
What vehicle is she in?
Is that a Trail Mose?
Yeah, it is. I've seen her. That's a Jeep, but it's been a workforce for the sheriff's office, so it's worked out quite well. Good thing Dave Vance not here.
And professional services is the animal thing, right?
Yeah, where we, crystal clear.
Yeah. You couldn't fuel out, where are you taking fuel for her now?
The, if you recall, last year I had submitted that we eliminate a certain dollar amount and she draws from the same tank that the deputies.
Oh, you just turn it over.
Trapped or, yeah, slid, the animal control into sheriff's budget.
Yeah.
It looks like if you's twenty-five hours a week, you're around sixteen dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
How were you handling vehicle maintenance before with hers?
Before, drawing out of that, that particular line.
It doesn't look like we had a line there before.
It was, it should be entitled fuel and vehicle maintenance.
Okay, well, then there's another one that says animal control vehicle.
I was going by what was right there. It said, you know, in the budget itself it says.
I was like, what did I get myself into? I walked into this with no notes and no other.
No learned questions.
Yeah, under six-two-six-four thousand dot zero three, it's entitled fuel and vehicle maintenance.
Yeah, that's right, it says fuel and vehicle maintenance, but yeah.
Oh, I see what, so you just, it's the same thing. You just call it something different. It's the same dollar amount. So one of them needs, whatever it is, one of them needs to be zero, one of them needs to be fifty.
Well, it is zero. The four thousand dot zero three is zero.
The zero three is zero now and the sixty is fifteen hundred, so I can, I see.
Did you catch that money? So I put it in a different line.
And the other two?
I put it in a different line.
Did you want it in a different amount or did you want it zero dollar?
It said, well, it said vehicle in your line, I'll just.
We'll get it.
I'll fix it.
Can I ask what you're fixing though?
I put that fifteen hundred into the four thousand oh three, which really shouldn't be a four thousand line and when it said vehicle, I just put it, created a new vehicle line, so.
Cause that should be a.
So it should be, because for vehicle maintenance, it should go up into the regular line is four thousand oh three.
But it shouldn't be a four thousand line.
It shouldn't be a four thousand line, but it's always been there.
Yeah.
Somebody created it that way. So it really should be a three thousand.
Yeah.
I can make it that way for this year and fix it next year. But I'll get it in the right line here.
Yeah, sounds good. All, the only other thing is donations, so everybody good with that? Any other questions?
Nope.
Thanks for being flexible too.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I just, and I think majority of it is out of my direct cell number, so I mean, any question, take time. You have very thoughtful morning with young deputies, I get those calls every morning, so I'm used to it. But if you don't have my cell, either check with another, maybe the council or, you know, maybe the office or the sheriff's with you. All right.
Thanks Doug.
Yes, you are.
You are.
What page is he on, Phil?
He's on twenty-one.
Well, just first we can start off kind of like Toby, I appreciate each one of you guys and the job you do and the support you've had for the EMS service. As you know, we don't have a hospital in the county, so the community really depends on our staff to get there when there's emergency situations. I can safely say that we have, we have a lot of the best equipment around, so, and that's because you guys have supported us and we're able to have that. Our staff really thanks you for that. As far as the budget goes, it's really pretty self-explanatory. I didn't ask for a whole lot of any change, much changes at all from last year. Probably the biggest change, and you can kind of look at it on the medical equipment line, which is the three oh one four thousand dot eleven. I put in there for cardiac monitors that we've been talking about, that we have to replace two more by February of next year, stay in compliance. With the CARES Act money, I know Mike and I think the group, I don't know if they've talked yet about it, but Mike's trying to get two of those monitors from the CARES Act money. So if that happens, then we won't be ready to do that anymore. So that kind of all depends on if that's able to come out of there or if you're spending it out there.
Do you think it out here, CARES Act?
No, I don't have it on. Yeah, I only got one plugged out. Mine's a grand, so I find the seven.
I mean, do we have to spend that to show that we spent it back?
Do we spend it this year then? Is that what you?
Yeah, all that CARES money is going to be spent.
Everything has to be done by the end of the year.
So if that was the case, we're just gonna be. So if that, if something happens, we get those out of that money, then I wouldn't need that in this line. I would like to have a little bit in there, I would say, kind of what we had this past year, just in case something comes up and we need to buy a piece of equipment, you know.
On the medical equipment line?
Yeah, track boards, you know, air tracks, just going to buy something like that or a break. Other than that, do you have any other questions? A lot of us. Not much change at all, but we have a little things. We did, I did put a hundred dollars back in printing. I'll have to get some more envelopes next year. We just started with the state, with the tracks program, the reimbursement thing. I just started that last, the last, hopefully moving forward, that'll generate some extra revenue as well. But I'll need extra envelopes and that type of stuff to send out.
The medical director, the contract, is that someone outside of the EMS?
That's Dr. Dutter.
That is Dr. Dutter.
Yeah, we have to contract through the state, we have to have a medical director for our EMS service.
That has to be an MD?
Yes. And what that is, is he, we basically work under his license. So all our medics, pre-hospital care, work under his license and he sets all of our protocols and it moves over our audits and that type of thing.
Any other questions? Appreciate all your work, Doug.
Thank you.
Have any questions to make Paul?
At three in the morning?
Three in the morning. I may not answer at three in the morning.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
I could ask Abby, she's got a doctor's appointment at noon. And you knew that, she said she tried to come down from court.
This morning? This morning or?
This morning.
If you're ready, or we can go over the council's budget.
No, yeah, I'm just, I mean, knock them off, yeah.
Nelson then or?
Huh? Yours. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine. First of all.
Wait one second, I'm gonna see if you can kind of more word.
There's, I went with, some of the county officials got together and did a spreadsheet of asking for the first deputies three thousand dollars and then plus the five percent. Second deputies are one thousand and first clerks are one thousand with five percent. This will equal out that each division is like three thousand dollars different from the next level, which I think is very helpful when trying to hire someone, but, so I think that's good. So I went along with that. I did put my real estate deputy, the full amount, back into my county general budget, but I also have it in my plat book, half of it in my plat book, just in case you would decide to take it all out of the county general. I think that's where it should be. But to get my first clerk, I agreed that I would take it out of plat book, but it's not gonna be able to handle that forever, so. And talking about my first clerk, my office now is very, very efficient. We have payroll and HR, we have accounts payable, real estate, and the first clerk helps everyone. So it's, it's really working out really great and I want to say thank you again. So it's, it's really working out really great and I want to say thank you again for my first clerk. I think everything is practically the same. A lot of it that we put in, for office supplies, I kept that the same. And you see that I have not spent much, but our bills are coming in now for our office supplies, computer supplies, same, same scenario. Our postage, I took that down a hundred dollars, just we're trying to get envelopes with stamps already on it, makes a lot more sense. Meetings, of course, we haven't spent anything on that, but that, a lot of mine can come out of the election. Elected county officials. There's some of them in hardware districts and things. Membership, that's a percentage of my salary, so I took that up just a little bit. Computer software. We got the two thousand mainly because of. I don't have my real notes here, I'm sorry.
So something you brought out of plat book onto this budget?
It could have been a path during data process. I know that's what it is. Computer software, that's the data pit stop. And that is a software that Darren Bates used for, helps us with deck size, but it also can go into the real estate and it helps us track down homesteads that are in different counties. And it also, he has other things that we want to start utilizing. So I put it in here. I also have it in plat book, so one way or the other, it doesn't matter to me. Shredding, it's fifteen dollars per time and I thought it was twelve months and it's really thirteen times. I don't know why, but that's what I think it was. Hartman and Williams are five thousand. I do not have a exact amount, but that is to do, help with the annual financial report in February. Last year we did it for a little bit over five thousand. I think this year I can have some of the labor done. And she helps entering that into gateway and things like that. But we also have two thousand dollars left that I could encumber, so that could be a lower amount. But I don't know more when we start, or you guys start cutting. Unless you're not going to cut anything. Also, if it could help out, the reviving records. We didn't do it this year and I think I could probably pass in one year if it was of desire. Mainly because I put this ordinance, that's spelled wrong, but ordinance codification, that really should be in the commissioner's budget, but we had already got that done. And I have to tell you that being the auditor, you work on everybody else's budgets and then you do your own and you just, you just do it. So I know that sounds silly, but mine was the last one, probably two weeks ago. And the councils. And so the codification of the ordinances has been requested by the county attorney and kind of myself, because they have not been done since two thousand ten. And American Publishing has not really given me a quote, but I have it all on a flash drive that I can send to him and get that more of a specific number. But that is something that the county really needs, because we, if something changes, it goes back.
Doesn't it make more sense on that, mission budget than your budget?
Well, that's what I'm just saying. I had that one done, so I mean, I didn't want to leave it out, so I can, we can switch it at the time.
I didn't understand what you were saying. Was there another line that could come out of, in their budget?
Not, they didn't plan on it, is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we can switch it at, at the time.
Probably the thing to do is to come out of the year.
We don't have anything to.
I thought you said you had, you were getting a quote.
Quote? Quote is not an invoice.
Wow.
I can't use a quote.
Well, but you're in the process, right? Can you have it done before day in the year and then it'll just come with the measures? But.
Isn't that quick then?
Oh, it's not?
I mean, I don't know what all I could, but I'm sure it.
She has to go through and find all the ordinances, send them copies of all the ordinances and then they go through and they codify them to.
I can show it to you.
And then annually, or every other year, whatever you choose, you send the years where the ordinance is down. And they'll codify them and replace pages.
They have not done that since two thousand ten, so I, you know, I asked him for a lot of stuff for quote and he wasn't really sure. He wanted me to send everything down before and then. But I wanted to get it in the budget process for next year, just because of not knowing. We need it sometime. If I can get it in the year, maybe we can transfer some of that.
Be nice if the ordinances were orderly.
I mean, I know Mike is always looking for something and while I know we've done something else on this, you know, well, it's, it's just hard. And so Ted said that they really need to codify to, last time that that was done was Barry Anderson in two thousand ten. I do have a couple of things though, I know, you know, I mean, I can't sit here and not say anything, but I've listened to some of these people come up to the podium and talk. And the one is the core reporters, you know, they want big raises for them, but you know, they are not elected officials. And I don't think that they should be making the same amount as a wanted official and that's what has kind of been asked of you. That's just my personal opinion. I know there are other elected officials that would say the same thing during the closure. I'm not trying to tune my own horn, but I did not miss a day. And you have other officials that say they were here every day. I, I know who was here and I know who didn't stay all day and I was here eight to five. And mainly because I was called an essential worker. Couple of the others were not, but they did come in and I'm not grudging all that. But when you come in for an hour and go home, that's not working all day. And anyway. I helped other offices. The other one was clerk. The clerk was here most of the time and she was here, especially since when the election started, she was here past the time. So I mean, I just want to give her kudos, cause she really stepped it up. And when we talk about not being able to bring in more than one girl, you have to ask for that to get that. And Callie did it because she needed it. I also heard people say that, you know, they get reimbursed for their telephone. This telephone is mine and I use it every day and I don't want to screen it either. But that's where people call me, they text me, you know, I've got, I can get stuff on there, I, you know, but anyway. The other thing was, something was kind of indicated that your first deputy can run your office and that's true. And it's been known like that in the assessors offices, it shows it more and has stepped up to the plate and she really has helped the assessors office out. But we have other deputies too that have done the same thing. I mean, maybe not for six months or however long it's been, but when I am gone, my first deputy steps up and she needs to be running the show. She, she can, she, you know, but also my second deputies are very responsible and have their own jobs that they need to do. And they have more responsibility than some of the other second deputies in the courthouse. All I want to say. I mean, if their work is not done, then we all care about it from the public or the commissioners not having claims done or something else like that. So when we were closed during the closure, we were trying to satisfy the public and we kept the public going. We might not have kept our work going, but we kept the public going by doing the deans. You know, we've heard a lot of complaints that the deans weren't done. Well, they start the reporter's office and they come over here, but she cannot do those unless the deans are in the courthouse. Just because we were closed, that doesn't mean they couldn't use the mail or call and drop them off at the door. We did a lot of that. I picked up a lot of those. So those complaints are, should be out there. Let's move on to the plat book. Plat book, I put half of my real estate deputy in there, just in case you still want to do it that way. The assessors office put her G I S specialist in this budget, that's where it's been paid for a long time, it's four hours per week. She usually works on Wednesday afternoon. And she put it at seventeen fifteen per hour. She also has on here, which I don't think I copied this page for you, is average hourly rate for G I S tech is twenty-two dollars per hour. That's from the K. The other one, I put data pit stop in there, it's two thousand, same as last year. And then assessors office put in, or their Schneider network, or software navigator editor and the program to do splits. And that's fifteen hundred dollars. So that one is kind of self-explanatory. The next one we did not have last year and that's law enforcement education. We should have, I had to come back for an additional on that. And that's where the city and town officers and the Indiana State Police and the Carroll County Sheriff brings in claims to get paid for their traffic tickets. So much of, I believe it's four dollars for a paid traffic ticket that they can claim. They have to prove that they're paid. The clerk gives them that, they're listing, so, so we just didn't do that last year. Do you have any questions on my budgets?
Thanks, Beth. Appreciate all of your day.
Right, I can wait till later. I just paid your taxes when I came down, so.
Let's do it.
Okay.
We're going to get this thing done.
Alright, sounds good.
What numbers here?
Uh, I can tell you on the sheet. I don't know if I can show the number on there. Okay, I'm going to start, I've got three sheets here. I'm going to start with our general budget. Got it raised for a sheet, okay, better work. Okay, so what I did here is, and I'll just go down the list. I asked for a five percent increase on, for pay for the clerk on the prosecutor secretary, that's Diane and Cassie right now. Diane is retiring at the end of the year. She's been here for, well, in this courthouse in some capacity or another, I think for at least thirty years, probably more than that. But she is retired at the end of the year. She's sixty-five this year, so she's done. So we'll have to hire somebody new come the beginning of the year. And that brings me to the part-time. The part-time, we have not used a lot this year because I didn't, I basically canceled the part-time when COVID came on, came into effect. And then I have not hired anybody back because I want to use that part-time money to hire Diane's replacement. The hope is that she comes in, or he or she, once we get somebody, comes in the beginning of October, we can use that part-time to train them for Diane's spot. Diane does the vast majority of all the computer work and everything behind the scenes. And so to get somebody just to come in on day one and be able to know how to do all the things she does is not, is not practical. And so I want to use.
Clerical or the secretary?
I'm sorry?
Cler, is that the clerical or the secretary?
The clerical.
Okay.
Kind of the office manager, if you will. That's why that was more. She kind of runs the whole show. She does the budget, she does the claims, not the budget. She does the budget forms for. We have a program we call, we use called P C M S. That's how we draft the charges and file the charges. She does all of those things. I'm learning it in my spare time, but she's way more efficient on it than I am. She also sends out victims, just does everything that we need done in the office. And so I want to use the part-time to, we have used a lot of the part-time this year because I've been kind of hoarding it, to train her successor. Come in in March and work the full, I think we had twenty-six hours a week up to part-time. And so I want to use, save a lot of money to use the full twenty-six hours a week for the last three months of the year. That's the hope. I wanted to, the plan is for Diane to then switch to part-time and be there to fill in for us when we need her, if we have questions about something. So her plan is to come back on, on part-time. And so that's why I wanted an increase in that, that part-time clerk. But right now we're at ten dollars an hour for part-time. I really just don't get a lot of good candidates for that low of income for part-time help. And if I, if I'm going to hire Diane as part-time, I know I have to advertise for it, but the plan is to hire her. I'd like to get in that range of fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour and that's where the thirteen thousand comes from. That's how we figure that. For the investigator, I asked for a bump on him for fifty thousand. That's in line with White County investigator makes and with the other investigators that I've talked to. So that's why I asked for that increase. Office supplies, we did ask for an increase there, the three thousand, we're just kind of trying to base that on the increased price of file folders and things like that. Now, our hope is to go digital towards the beginning of next year. There's going to be a little bit of delay with that because of the changes that occurred in my office with the chief deputy moving up to judge and me training a new person. But the hope is that we're going to go to digital and so those office supply numbers should drop in the future. That's the, that's the goal, right? That's the point of going digital. But right now we're seeing a trend up in the cost of file folders and other office supplies and so that was the reason for the increase there. With books and journals, we kept that the same. We bought our books and journals for the year. I think we had a cost of six hundred dollars and so it's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars from this year going back into, I think it was the general fund. But we don't spend, go back in the general fund. On the postage, we did increase that a little bit, just as postage goes up. We're having to mail out more letters and victim letters and those kinds of things. Telephone, cellphone BlackBerry, we have fifty dollars a month timed three users and so we got two thousand. That's where we came up with that number for the year. We have myself, the chief deputy and the investigator is on the cellphone plan. Witness fees and transcripts, we kept that at a thousand. We're not going to use any more of that this year, so there's going to be six hundred and sixty-six dollars of that going back to the general fund. We're not using any more of that this year. We have only one more trial coming up. We don't need transcripts or witnesses or any professional expert witness fees for that trial. So whatever we don't spend, we don't try to, my office doesn't, you know, if we have a thousand dollars left in postage, we don't have to the year go and buy a thousand dollar book stamps. Unless we know they're going to go up in price, we can save some money. So whatever we don't spend, we try to be conscientious of that and that goes back in the general budget. And that's what's happening with the witness and transcript fees and then the books. The books and journals, we're trying to do as much as we can online with the online databases that we have. We do buy the little books and they're at a cost of about six hundred dollars, I think, right now. And those are the books we use in the courtrooms and we give to the officers. And so that is about the only expense we're going to have for books and journals. Car maintenance and fuel for the investigator vehicle, we had to estimate that. We put four thousand dollars. We estimated that based on what he spent so far this year. And so that's how we got that number. We talked to Steve, looked at his fuel bills and kind of get, had an estimate of what we think it'll be. That's what we think it'll be. I think that covers everything for the general.
Are you paying that out of diversion now?
Right now we are, yeah. Right now we're paying for everything. When I.